Call the meeting to order if you could please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for the prayer.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I also ask you we remain in the spirit and attitude of prayer as we contemplate what happened in Texas yesterday. Lord, you have given us the knowledge and the technology to cure all kinds of diseases and disorders. You have also given us the knowledge and technology to destroy mankind. Invue us all with the wisdom to know to use our knowledge and our power for good and to fight evil as we confront it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Roll call, please, Mr. Fiore.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Ms. Venus is absent, Mr. Fiore is present. Mr. Lura. Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Chairman DeMello.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is absent, and Mayor O'Connell.
Present.
Whoops. All right, welcome, everyone. It's so wonderful to see everyone here this evening for the school committee recognition of community members and the school committee recognition of students in Taunton Public Schools. And it really says a lot of great things about our community, that there are so many people here to be recognized, so many great teachers here that help our kids along the way to reach this point, and so many parents who support our kids and give them a little nudge when they need it. So, thank you all. So, we will start the evening with recognition by Principal Annabelle Jones of Elizabeth Poole School.
Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. Ooh, that's much louder. I'm gonna stand back, so I have a loud voice. So, Jill Correio, our PTU president at Poole School, the year I came on, her children had actually moved on to the middle school. But she stayed on as our PTU president because she didn't want to leave at the height of pandemic and leave the school stranded. So, that is the reason I'm recognizing her. She obviously had no obligation to stay on once her children had moved on, but she, you know, was dedicated to the teachers at our school, the students at our school. So, not only did she stay on, she actually met, you know, I met with her and the principal virtually every month. We would continue to have our PTU meetings. We didn't have many events to plan at that time, not a lot of fundraises going on, but she still met. We, you know, we would try to put a plan in place about, you know, the new board coming on. So, she did that for a full year. Again, not much happened. It was not a great year that we all want to remember too much about. Then come September of this current school year, September 2021, lo and behold, we didn't have anybody, new board not intact yet. She continued to stay on, and we met. We made, our plan was to recruit a new board at that time. Again, she continued to meet with us, still virtual for part of the year. She did all of this behind-the-scenes work at recruiting families. We would give her some names, we would, you know, we did a little bit on our part. But she is the one that actually, after a year and a half, found me a whole new PTU board, literally four new members, and has finally now, you know, moved on. She is, you know, she's no longer at our school, although she, when I called her about the certificate, she was, you know, wonderful answered right away. She probably thought I needed some, something, but... So, I'm sad that she's not here to receive it. I'll make sure she gets her award. But I really could not say enough about Jill. I mean, just the fact that she met with me, she had no obligation, continued to work hard. I mean, the staff planning that she did, we, like, we did not miss a beat, you know. We did, not only did we do one staff appreciation day, like, it was five days. Like, she snacks, she provided whatever we needed, she went above and beyond. So, again, I cannot say enough about Jill Correio. I'm sure Parker and I'm sure Mr. Byron is, you know, is benefiting from her leadership, from her dedication to students. So, I'm envious, but I'm so grateful for what she did for us. So, I want to again say thank you to Jill Correio. I can't wait to give her her certificate.
Thank you. Next, school committee chairman Greg DeMello will give a recognition to a community member.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everyone for being here tonight. It's such a great turnout, as was already stated. And this award started by a simple visit to the Pilgrim Congregational Church, which is located on Broadway during their 200th year anniversary. 200th year that was postponed by a year because of COVID. So, anyway, we were still there to celebrate. And as I went in, I started seeing some familiar faces. And one familiar face led to another familiar face. And next thing you know, I'm touring the entire church, all the way up to the rafters where the organ is and behind the scenes where there's a school, a Sunday school. And every inch of that building was covered with a personal tour. But as I was about to leave and meeting new friends and old friends that I reacquainted with, someone pointed out to me a wall that was in one of the halls. And as I went over, there was a person that was standing there and being very humble, as she is, was explaining to me what that wall was all about. And there was a bunch of newspaper clippings about community donations that took place to one of our schools here in Taunton, which is the Galligan School. And here to my left, I have Ms. Tara Gagnon, who is the principal, formerly of the Hopewell, now of the Galligan. And I started thinking, I says, boy, this has been going on for how long? And it's been going on for many, many years. Actually, when you were Hopewell principal, correct? And I said, wait a minute, and you do this, how does this happen? So, I have Tara here with me because she's gonna explain to everybody what actually the impact has had with these folks that are right behind me. And with us, we have Pastor Gary Sylvia. Come on up, please. We have Lynn McIntyre, who is my assistant during the tour. And we have Deb Carrero, who is a whist player. I play whist on Thursday nights. But she's also a member of the Congregational Church. So, Ms. Gagnon, could you just please tell everybody what this is all about?
Certainly. So, my friends here from Pilgrim Church would come to Hopewell School several years in a row prior to us closing down. And they would come at the very beginning of the year with backpacks full of thousands of dollars worth of supplies for my students, anything that you can imagine in a backpack along with the backpacks, snacks, anything that I needed. At Thanksgiving time, they would show up with baskets full of anything you can imagine to make an amazing meal for families that were in need, along with gift cards to different stores so they could go get their fresh turkeys. If I had an issue in the middle of the year, for example, a student had a fire in their home, Lynn would call constantly, was this one of your children? Yes, it was. And she'd ask me for sizes, she'd ask me for the entire family's sizes. And somehow, the church would arrange to get clothing to me, games, toys, anything I needed for the family to get back to normal living. And at Christmas time, they showed up with presents and gifts and toys and all kinds of wonderful things so that my students at Hopewell and now at Galligan never were without. They were god sends, and I can't thank them enough.
I couldn't have said it any better because, of course, the impact is with the students and with the principals. So, thank you so much for sharing that. So, on behalf of the entire school committee, from Mayor O'Connell to all the members of the school committee and the leadership of Taunton Public Schools, I extend this certificate of recognition to the Pilgrim Congregational Church and, of course, you, Lynn McIntyre, and everybody that supports you. So, thank you so much.
Okay, what a wonderful story about people helping people right here in our community. Our next recognition is by Kristen Shay, a teacher at Mokeehe Elementary School.
Hello. My name is Kristen Shay, and I'm a fourth grade inclusion teacher at the Mokeehe Elementary School. This year, I had the opportunity to work with an amazing group of diverse students who had a variety of different learning and emotional needs. One of these amazing students happens to be Eloise McLaughlin. At just 10 years old, Eloise is a natural leader. She jumps in and helps others without ever being asked. She is patient, kind, and wise beyond her years. Her work ethic is unmatched, and she loves a good challenge. She goes above and beyond, not only academically, but socially as well. She listens the first time and gives her classmates gentle reminders when needed. Last week, Eloise asked me privately if she could move her seat. When I asked her why she wanted to move, she explained that she noticed a student was struggling with fractions. She also noticed that an empty seat was next to that student. She thought if she sat with her for a few of our whole group math lessons, she could help the student to make more concrete connections. And this is exactly what Eloise did. A week later, that same struggling student had her first mathematical aha moment in quite some time. Eloise naturally scaffolds instruction to meet the individual needs of the student. She loves helping others and always makes sure to celebrate others' successes. Our classroom community often refers to Eloise as a student-teacher. If I'm busy or absent, students know that they can ask Eloise for help with anything. They know Eloise will show them kindness and patience without any judgment. When other students are explaining some of her amazing attributes, they use words like gold-getter, goal-getter, or the kindness queen. Eloise is an exceptional student whose dream is to one day become an educator herself. Maybe one day, we'll be lucky enough to have Eloise come back to the Mokeehe community to change the lives of even more members of our diverse community. Eloise has been an outstanding honor to be your fourth grade teacher. I cannot wait to hear about all the amazing accomplishments you will continue to make throughout your academic career. Thank you for being an exemplary student. And thank you for helping me to provide a safe space for our inclusive classroom. You will be very missed at Mokeehe, but we know we are ready for your next big adventure in middle school. Do you want them to wait, and they can both shake your hand at the same time?
Yeah, that'd be great if they both want to come together.
Christian Raposo is a student who constantly strives to go above and beyond. Since September, it's been a true privilege to watch Christian fill the bloom into the marvelous young man he is today. Christian has helped us to create a classroom community that is filled with love, understanding, and critical thinking. He pushes himself to do his very best, and he collaborates with all members of our community. When Christian first arrived in September, he worked hard and mostly kept to himself. Quite quickly, Christian realized that there are a few students who shared the same unwavering love for mathematics as he did. Once he noticed this, he started to come out of his shell. He started by consistently participating in math lessons and fluency practice. He became known as a classroom helper for S.T. math puzzles. During morning work, he and a small group of students challenged themselves to collaboratively solve multi-step math problems. The members of this group all share the same common value of perseverance and persistence. Christian works hard and has an overall love and respect for education. He is also kind and very compassionate. We are lucky to have a wide variety of learners in our inclusive classroom. Christian has such a strong awareness of others' needs, even when they are much different than his. Christian provides additional scaffolds for instruction without any direction from me. He understands that no two learners are the same and constantly models a variety of strategies for the class. Although Christian's passion is mathematics, he continues to excel across all contents. He checks all of his work carefully before ever passing it in. He has been a motivated student since the beginning of the school year. With Christian's overall work ethic, love of education, and kind art, he will continue to change lives and grow as a learner. Christian, I feel so very lucky that I got to be your fourth grade teacher. Thank you for supporting our community and going above and beyond every single day. Your bright smile and positive attitude will be greatly risked in room 315. However, you are so ready for middle school to learn even more new math strategies. Keep up the excellent work, Christian.
Christian and Eloise, thank you for being so kind and thoughtful. Our next presenter will be Michael Kelleher, a teacher at Bennett... Oh, I'm sorry, principal, Principal Michael Kelleher, excuse me, from Bennett School.
Thank you. What can I say? It's been a heck of a year. Back in September, we started with masks on, we were social distancing. And all those things seemed to be getting better, and we were happy to be together. There was still a lot of anxiety and stress. And there was also the big question of when is this gonna get back to normal? Our reading incentive program is always a big event in the spring. It's fun for kids and promotes literacy. All in all, it's a great way to wind down the school year. Given that we had some restrictions still and respecting family situations, we needed to go in another direction. I asked our Title I teacher, Michelle O'Donnell, for some suggestions to continue our tradition of promoting literacy in the spring. Mrs. O'Donnell is our only Title I teacher. Her reach is building wide. She's an active, fun, and creative person who always has something up her sleeve. She has an uncanny ability to stay focused on child development while keeping things light. Whether it's music in the hallway, dressing up as character, Mrs. O'Donnell is always looking for ways to connect with students to help them reach their goals. When her husband accepted a job in Okinawa, Japan last year, she took a leave of absence and taught reading and math at a K through 5 military school there. Upon her return, she didn't miss a beat. Her ability to analyze data, plan interventions, were instrumental in acclimating our students to the new normal and getting them where they needed to be. Her personality and demeanor set a tone with our students in the year that said, don't worry, we're gonna get there. When I approached her about this literacy event in the spring, she asked for a few days to think about it. She came back with a sketch of a plan that had something to do with bingo. And like any principal, I looked at her and I said, sounds good. Let me know if you need anything. I went on my way. I expected more details to come and to connect her with PTO for volunteers, but none of that happened. She certainly had something up her sleeve. She recruited the following students: Rebecca Himes, Olivia Haston, Isabel Costa, Alannah Marrero, Abigail Aruda, Kennedy Santos, and Riley Gorfin. All seven proud Bennett School scholars. All seven demonstrated our values of kindness, safety, and responsibility. Over the years, we've watched them grow, and I am sure that they will go on to great things in middle school and high school. Together, they created, implemented a school-wide literacy program for Bennett. They created a bingo game where students did activities and filled in their squares. They created songs, scavenger hunts, grocery lists, rhyming lists, many things that students can do to develop their skills. But that's not all. A few weeks after my initial request, I walked past the classroom, and it was clear that something was going on, so I popped in to take a look. There, I saw the members of Mrs. O'Donnell's literacy team leading a class. They were the ones teaching the activities. They were the ones making real-world connections. They were the ones demonstrating the value of literacy in our world. Students teaching students, what could be better? It was at that moment that it hit me that we are back. This was good. We saw the line from sitting in a house trying to learn on a screen to leading our peers in a classroom. These seven Bennett School scholars, along with Mrs. O'Donnell, deserve recognition for not only promoting literacy in our community, but leading students and staff back from the new normal to just plain normal. Thank you, guys, for everything you do.
Well, congratulations to those young ladies, and thank you for helping your friends and peers. Love to read. Our next presenter will be Hannah Kennedy, a teacher from Parker Middle School.
My name's Hannah Kennedy. I teach sixth grade at Parker Middle School, and I'm also the Parker Middle School DECA advisor. So, this year, we started two middle school chapters for DECA. Those of you that don't know what DECA is, it's a business marketing program that goes throughout the high school. There has not since been a middle school chapter in Taunton and not many around here elsewhere. So, it was a really big deal, starting it. I had no idea what was going on. But I had a really great group of kids that decided that they were gonna take the leap with me. And so, without really knowing, I went into a couple of classrooms, sixth and seventh grade, and I recruited my heart out, and I got a great group of kids. I'm here to recognize three students, though, today, who not only took the leap with me, but they also came to almost every single meeting. They were one of the nine students to compete over here at the high school for the middle school competition. And they competed against their other Parker students, as well as students from Friedman. And these three students actually placed in the top three for their three events. Two of my friends unfortunately could not be here tonight, but I do have one of my friends here, and I'm very, very happy. So, here, I have Tamara Rivera de Jesus, and she placed third in advertisement. And I am just so, so proud of everything you accomplished and all of the confidence and the hard work that you put in. We also have Gia Tovar, who could not be here tonight. She placed second in business innovation. And then Jeriel Green, who also couldn't be here, but placed second in sales. I can't be any more thrilled with the participation and the outcome that we got this year. And I am so proud and that they went above and beyond what was expected of them. So, thank you.
Tamara, wonderful to see you starting DECA so soon and already winning competitions. Hope you continue throughout high school. Our next presenter is Principal Bert Delaney from Taunton Alternative High School.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to all the students tonight that they are recognized. There's a lot of good going around, especially in this district. I'm proud to work in this district. And when I come to these events, it just reinforces what a great place the city of Taunton is. So, tonight, with me standing here tonight is a senior, Jenna Peckman, at Taunton Alternative High School. Jenna is our top academic senior this year, holding a grade point average of 3.5. During her high school career, Jenna has participated in the band and music program here at Taunton High School, DECA, Student Council, and the Drama Club. The big thing that sticks out with Jenna, and I've had the fortunate, fortunate to have her sister years ago and her family, her mom and dad are right over there, is that as a principal of a high school, you need your seniors to step up, and that's how your building is gonna go. Every year, you're looking for seniors to step up. I can only do so much, and I'm really not that good at what I do. These kids make it look, I'm really not. Jenna quietly stepped into a leadership role the entire year in her academic classes. She's not one to speak out or make her voice known, but she does. She comes in every day. She's very demanding of herself academically. She's demanding of her classmates, and she's demanding of her teachers. And she goes about it the right way, and she doesn't look for fanfare. That's what leadership is. Jenna, I can't thank you enough for leading us this year. As Mr. Kelleher pointed out, to a normalcy. You've been a great student to work with, your family. I thank you for allowing me to work with you over these years. I can't say enough about this young lady. She's been accepted at Curry College. She's been accepted at Mass College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences. She's been accepted at UMass Boston. And she's been accepted at and will attend UMass Dartmouth in the fall. Jenna is also on the wait list at UMass Dartmouth for their very prestigious nursing program. And if anybody knows about that, that is one of the most competitive nursing programs in the state. Jenna, you've gone above and beyond. You're gonna do great things down at the campus. I look forward to getting a Corsair sweatshirt in the fall. I present to you someone that's gone above and beyond, and I'm gonna truly, truly miss her presence in the building every day, Jenna Peckman. If I can, Mayor, before you...
Yes?
Not that I have, I'm quiet or anything, but there's someone here I want to recognize for going above and beyond. And she doesn't know it, but she's looking at me right now, and she doesn't want, she doesn't want to hear anything. But nine years ago, I came to Taunton, not knowing anybody. Didn't even know what a Tauntonian was, had no idea. Mr. Cabral interviewed me with Dr. Hackett, and they gave a young principal, well, young back then, a job. So, being a young, young principal, first time as a principal, no clue what I was up against. Gloria Palmer, who's sitting right there... Gloria Palmer, who's sitting right there, okay, Ms. Palmer? Okay? Went above and beyond to make a new young principal feel at home. And there were times, and I'd watch her in action, she was a teacher with us at the Alternative High School that night. So she would teach all day, and then she would come over to us. And there were times as a new principal, I'm like, holy moly, this lady really expects a lot out of these kids. And when I would talk to her, she always, sense of calm, "Mr. Delaney, we need to challenge these students so we can get the best out of them." So Gloria, Ms. Palmer, I can't call her Gloria. Ms. Palmer, thank you for going above and beyond, making a non-Tauntonian feel at home.
Thank you, Principal Delaney, for recognizing Ms. Palmer. I think everybody completely agrees with that, and I don't think there's too many people who don't know Gloria Palmer and all of the volunteering she does, all of the extra work she does, and so much that she does with our children. So, thank you, Gloria. The only thing I might disagree with is that you were young, considered young, nine years ago. Okay, our next presenter is Gloria Palmer.
Good evening, everyone, and, Mr. Delaney, thank you for those kind words. Mrs. Farias and I are here to recognize four of our students in the Taunton High School African-American Club. We want to call up Daquan Rae, Boradine Cherry, who is an upcoming graduate, is home studying for a calculus test. Annabelle Caramello, and Condoleezza Dwyer. We are recognizing these four members because they were instrumental in keeping the African-American Club afloat during the pandemic school year of 2020 through 2021, while Mrs. Farias and I both were teaching from home. These members attended our virtual meetings every two weeks and encouraged others to do so. We were still able to support some of our annual events in a modified way. Our sickle cell walk fundraiser was executed by individuals photographing and videoing their walks. Our funds were collected online, as usual. Unable to participate in in-person events, we held a virtual Kwanzaa celebration in December. I set up the Kwanzaa table at my house, and members and guests read their scripts from individual homes and celebrated with their own food and drink. These students were instrumental in planning and implementing a virtual Black History Month celebration. Various provocative panel discussions, such as mass incarceration, colorism, and mistreatment of transgender Black women were researched and presented online. These students also invited students from their other club affiliations. The superintendent and the executive director of Human Resources attended one of these discussions. A few students who were attending school in person continued our tradition of paying tribute to African-Americans through the morning and afternoon announcements to the entire student body. These same students participated in weekly online presentations before the Taunton City Council as part of the mayor's declaration and acknowledgement of Black History Month in Taunton during February. They collected photos and created a collage of club members for the yearbook. They participated in person for the George Floyd Memorial Gathering on the grounds of First Parish Church. They participated virtually in the Brockton Area NAACP ACCO Academic Contest, bringing gold and silver medals. They also participated in popcorn and movie nights. One movie was Beyoncé's innovative song and dance-filled version of "The Lion King." The dedication of these students to keep the club going demonstrates the loyalty and responsibility that they each bring with them to any of their endeavors. Mrs. Farias and I are so proud to recognize these qualities and to brag about these members publicly. Thank you.
So for my seniors, you know I hate to see you go. I'm not happy about it. But they say I have to let you go, so we'll do it. A certificate of recognition for your commitment to excellence and outstanding contributions to our school community, and particularly to us. Okay? Daquan? Some pretty amazing students with some equally amazing accomplishments. Okay, our next presenters are Sarah Gibson and Lee Howlett, teachers from Taunton High School.
At this time, I'd like to invite Maddie and Mikel to the podium. This past year, we've had in our Chapter 74 programs, our vocational programs, an internship program that students took part of. Some students went to outside job placements. Mikel went to Two Jerks Restaurant. But in addition, both Mikel and Maddie interned in the culinary department. Chef Hall and I, at the beginning of the year, with a couple of challenging Culinary One classes and so many events that we do after school and in the evening, thought maybe it would be great to have, you know, some of our seniors come and intern in our program. And we couldn't have picked two better kids. One of the Culinary Ones classes this fall was particularly challenging. And Maddie went in and tried to mentor the students, teach them their skills, be a positive role model. And she also did that in my Culinary One class this semester. And the kids, you know, the students love her. They're sophomores, and they see these seniors that come in and enjoy culinary, enjoy being part of the department. And it's been really, really great. They've put up with our bad jokes. They've washed a lot of dishes, way too many dishes. They've helped Chef Hall at numerous occasions, doing whatever we may need, putting together platters for caterings and such, and we're just very, very fortunate to have had them in our internship program this year. So thank you both. And they didn't get paid. Some kids went on internship and didn't get paid. They did this for their love and some root beer.
Thank you. Our next presenter is Sarah Gibson, again, from Taunton High School.
Me again. If the Skills students could come up, that'd be great. So you may recognize some of these students here. The last recognition, they won district medals and then competed at the State Conference for Skills USA. Skills USA is one of the largest career and tech organizations in the state. They competed in Marlboro among various two-day competition spread across various weeks due to COVID. And it was our first in-person competition in two years. And so it was great to be back, and we did exceptionally well. We did really well. We competed against hundreds of other students and numerous other vocational schools who spend six hours a day in their shops. And so for these students to come with medals is just, you know, a test to their talent. So this evening, we have Samuel Schumacher, who won gold for medical math, and will be representing Taunton High School at Nationals in Atlanta in June and the state of Massachusetts. Next, we have Felicia Dias and M. Ganon, who received a silver medal at State for their work on their television production. They had to create a one-minute video. Oh, sorry, Audio Radio. They had to create a one-minute Audio Radio program. TV's coming up. Leo Levek and Emily Keiker did a one-minute television production promo, I guess you'd say, about Skills USA, and they won bronze at the state competition. And then, he couldn't be here with us this evening, but Darian Siambob won bronze for computer programming, spent four hours creating a computer program. And so he won bronze at the state competition. And last but not least, Toreen Hodgson, who won bronze for culinary arts, spent four and a half hours cooking a three-course meal, salad, soup, appetizer, and entree. So he won third at the state competition. So very proud of all these students. Thank you.
Talented and hardworking, and some of those students get up voluntarily at 5:30 to do the extra work that they do in these extracurricular activities, so got to hand it to them. Okay, our next presenter is Chef Lee Howlett, Taunton High School.
I promised I wouldn't cry. But you know I will. I once again find myself, here it goes, in awe of the Pro Start students that you see before us. Their hard work minus dish duty and dedication on honing their craft is remarkable. Ethan, Emily, Toreen, Malia, and Nolan. Sorry, guys. M. You have obtained a success not only seen in the sorry, you have obtained a success not as seen before in the MRAEF Pro Start Culinary Competition. You fought your way through winning first place at States out of 14 teams and came seventh out of 42 teams at Nationals in Washington, DC. You've competed against many successful vocational technical high schools. You've dedicated every waking hour to this competition and have now made a name for the Taunton High School culinary team, as well as for yourselves. You have set the bar high, and you've left a legacy at the Taunton Culinary. THS teams will be there, will be the ones to be watched. Hence, we have teams that we go and watch when we first started. Now they're coming to watch us. As you move on to college, or in Nolan's case, your senior year with us, please keep in mind these words taken from Dr. Seuss, "Oh, the places you'll go." You're off to great places. Today is your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way.
Okay, our next presenter is Ashley Pacico-Gilmet, the World Language Curriculum Supervisor, Taunton High School.
Thank you. I'm also going to have Mr. Rivera, one of our Spanish teachers, and Ms. Olivera, one of our Portuguese teachers, and Senor Ele, Mr. Leonard, one of our Spanish teachers as well. These are my colleagues who are going to help with presenting the certificates and medals to some very special students tonight. World Language students, World Language winners, you know who you are. Can you please approach the podium? Gracias. They're a little bit reluctant. Come on, come on over, World Language kiddos. Okay. Buenas noches. Buena noche, bonjour, buenos dias. And good evening, everyone. It is a privilege to stand before you today to recognize the accomplishments of some outstanding students in the World Languages Program here at Taunton High School. This year, 142 students, 142 of our Taunton High School students competed in the National Spanish, Portuguese, French, and Latin Exam. And this evening, we want to celebrate 24 And this evening, we wanna celebrate 24 of these students who attained national recognition for exceptional performance in the nation. I will begin with Spanish. The National Spanish exam was administered to approximately 4,000 middle and high schools throughout the United States. Out of our 55 students, eight of them earned national recognition this year. On the Level 1 exam, Zaden Mendez Gonzales earned honorable mention. On the Level 2 exam, Stephanie Zelea Brito earned honorable mention, while Letizia Lopez earned a bronze medal. On the Level 3 exam, Bernard Miongo, Condulisa Dwey, and Kaylee Sanchez earned honorable mention, while Carla Rafael earned a bronze medal. On the Level 4 exam, Brandon Brown earned a bronze medal. A round of applause for the Spanish winners. On the National Portuguese exam, we have nine students who earned national recognition out of the 49 students who participated from Taunton High School. 350 students throughout the United States participated in the National Portuguese exam this year. On the Level 1 exam, Mia Mendez earned honorable mention. On the Level 3 exam, Victoria Tavardes earned a silver medal. On the Level 4 exam, Ava Costa, Christina DeCosta, Dakota Costa, and Stephanie Rizendig earned honorable mention. And Emma Hillman earned a bronze medal. Sheila DePina earned a silver medal. And Sarah Mendoza earned a gold medal. A round of applause for the Portuguese students. And last but not least, the National Latin exam. The National Latin exam is administered annually to approximately 150,000 students in all 50 states and 13 foreign countries. Out of our 31 students who participated this year, seven of them earned national recognition. On the Level 2 exam, Madeline O'Brien and Samuel Farrar earned magna cum laude. Natalie Duncan earned silver, maxima cum laude. On the Level 3 exam, Brady Burgess earned cum laude. Zachary Gay and Noah Bulcaw earned silver, maxima cum laude. And Liam Scully earned a gold, summa cum laude award. A round of applause for the Latin winners. Tigers, we are so proud of you for all of your accomplishments on these World Language exams. You truly are global citizens and cultural ambassadors for the city of Taunton. Congratulations. Keep it up. Keep up the great work. Thank you. Once you get your certificate, you can go ahead and shake the hands of our school committee members. Another round of applause for our World Language winners. Thank you.
Our next presenter is Principal Jo Pomfret, Taunton High School. Associate Principal, I was wondering why that's...
Thank you.
Give the promotion there.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. I might take a little bit of time, extra time, to celebrate an extraordinary scholar in this room right now. One of a kind, to be honest with you. And a product, a true product of the Taunton Public Schools. Samuel Schumacher is what I like to call, well, he's the epitome of what I like to call the Holy Trinity of the secret to success of student achievement. Okay? Number one, family. Mother Candy, Father Rick Schumacher. Okay? We all know how important the family component is to academic achievement. Of course, Sam himself, the student. Oh, hi, Sam. He's like a ninja. Takes character, grit, and talent. And of course, number three, the academic institutions themselves, our schools. From grade kindergarten to 12th grade, every teacher, every principal, every custodian, nurse, guidance counselor, and everybody else we can imagine there. All together, family, student, school. My initial experience with Sam was in Mrs. Dyer's AP programming class. As I stood behind him and saw what he was doing, I didn't understand any of it. It looked like Egyptian hieroglyphics to me. Sam will be attending Northeastern University for computer programming. I got a chance to walk out with Sam today. I happened to catch him as I was doing lunch duty. Sam, I just wanted to talk to him a little bit more, you know, just kinda get a human feel. Just because Sam is an under-the-radar kind of kid, young man, that I don't typically have to work with as an associate principal at Taunton High School. And as we're walking out there, he's like, yeah, my car's over here. This two-year-old, brand-new Chevy Equinox. I was a little jealous. It's better than my car. It's better than his dad's 2004 F-150 going on two engines. But that's what family does, right? Don't get red, it's okay. All right. In order for Sam to be eligible for the National Merit Scholarship Award, he had to have perfect or near-perfect PSATs and SAT scores, which is pretty amazing. In addition to that, he's never had less than an A+ since the eighth grade. Yes. So Superintendent John Cabral and Principal Scott Holcomb, who's not here, sends his regrets, are pleased to announce that Taunton School senior Samuel Schumacher has been named National Merit Scholarship finalist and recipient. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition that recognizes students for their outstanding performance in the SATs and pre-SATs. Sam is among 15,000 students in the U.S. who qualified as a 2022 National Merit Scholarship finalist. Typically, 1.5 million students in about 21,000 high schools enter the National Merit Scholarship Program each year, Sam. So could it. You deserve it. Principal Holcomb says, "It is quite an honor to be named as a National Merit Scholarship Program finalist and award winner. As those who receive this recognition are in the top 1%. If you do the math, it's less than 1%. Of all students nationwide who competed in the PSAT, Mr. Holcomb says, I'm sorry, Principal Holcomb says, "We are all extremely proud of Sam for this achievement and ask that everyone join us in congratulating him."
All right, great. Nicely done, Sam, once again, and everybody that supports Sam along the path. Next, we come to the part that is the school committee recognition of staff in the Taunton Public Schools. As we all know, every member of Taunton Public Schools help the students succeed. And we've seen so many examples here tonight. So whatever role you play as a staff member is very well appreciated by all of us. So thank you so much. First up, on behalf of the East Taunton Elementary School, we have Assistant Principal Suzie Delesio.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for actually mentioning that, Mr. DeMello. It's, it actually resonates a bit with me because I am honoring Ms. Gail Lins, who was very humble when we told her that she would be our recipient. And she stated, "But that's my job and this is what my team does," referring to her educational assistants. And we know that very much. And before presenting today, she actually shared with me, I've known Ms. Lins for a short two years, and I've watched her work so hard. She's very dedicated. And as I will mention in my words, she never wavers and hesitates to take action and step in wherever she's needed. But she recently just told me, in the brief two years that I've seen her dedication, she shared that she has been working in our building for 10 years and for the Taunton Public School community for 26 years. And so for watching her in the two years that I've been in the building and knowing how hard she has most likely worked if I've seen it in two years, and I can only imagine what she has done for our community. So with that said, I'm gonna say a few words about what I've seen from Ms. Lins and our appreciation from the Bulldogs. So it's my pleasure to be standing here before all of you today to honor and celebrate all of our hard-working students and staff. We are acknowledging individuals who deserve special recognition for their hard work and dedication to our buildings. I'd like to share how grateful we are for the educational assistance of our building. These staff members have done an amazing job stepping in for colleagues in their absences or in a time of need. We utilize them daily, and they are all definitely some of the most valuable players in making sure that our days run smoothly. As mentioned, whether it's an absence of a colleague or within their assigned roles supporting their classroom teachers and students, these staff members have always been team players and right there to help. And we appreciate them very much. But one particular educational assistant has stood out to me this year as someone who goes the extra mile for the Bulldog family. And this assistant is Ms. Gail Lins. Ms. Lins is a friendly and familiar face to many of our students in our building. We are so lucky that one of our own staff can be there to greet early arrivals at our extended-day program where Ms. Lins works each morning. I've watched Mrs. Lins dedicate early mornings and late afternoons preparing things for the classroom in which she works. And more recently, I've heard, coming back to school to make sure that the butterflies would survive. This year, I watched as Ms. Lins rotated through intervention groups with her kindergarten classroom, walking them happily down the hall to and from their small group spaces, always eager to share their learning and wanting students to show a safe and responsible line. Ms. Lins has always been flexible. Without a waiver of hesitation, she is always willing to help. She has supported us in the general education setting and as well in our RISE program. She has attended after-school functions and volunteers to help wherever and whenever there is a need. So again, it is my pleasure to recognize Ms. Gail Lins, kindergarten assistant. From all of us at East Taunton, we thank you for going the extra mile. We appreciate all that you do.
Representing the James L. Mulcahy Elementary School, we have Principal Katie Decuta.
Good evening. Tonight, we would like to recognize Mr. Roy Ashton. Mr. Ashton is a fourth-grade teacher at the James L. Mulcahy Elementary School, where he proudly supports and works to support his students, families, and colleagues. Roy has been a teacher in Taunton since 2013, when he started to teach at the Hopewell Elementary School. Prior to working in Taunton, Mr. Ashton worked in Fall River. Lucky for Taunton, he decided that TPS would be his new teaching destination. I have known Roy since 2015, when we worked together at Hopewell School, where Roy was a fourth-grade teacher and I was the literacy coach. This is where I watched Roy strive to inspire students and to educate his fourth-grade students. This year, our new educator, Ms. Kristen Shea, saw something in Roy as her mentor, and I'd like to have her speak about him.
I'll talk fast, I promise. I have nominated my outstanding mentor, Roy Ashton, to be recognized by school committee. Mr. Ashton is a unique, compassionate, knowledgeable, fourth-grade inclusion teacher. He is unlike any other educator I have worked with in the past. All 20 of Mr. Ashton's students know that they are loved, heard, and valued every time they walk through his doors. Students remember Roy long after their transition into middle school. A particular moment I knew Roy was extra special was during parent conferences. I noticed a student waiting for well over an hour outside of his classroom. The student looked to be nearing the end of middle school and sat patiently while groups of grown-ups shuffled in and out of his classroom, something you don't see a teenager doing too often, especially after school hours. Once the conferences were complete, she walked in for a visit with her all-time favorite teacher, Mr. Ashton. She was one of his students a few years back and wanted to take the time to visit with him and thank him for making such a strong and powerful impact on her life. This is just one of countless stories regarding Mr. Ashton's long-term impact on both his students and colleagues. His inbox is constantly filled with messages from former students, giving great detail on their current academic journey and reminiscing over fond memories of their time in his classroom. Students who are starting to look at colleges or enter the workforce still remember Roy's impact from fourth grade. His heart made of pure gold and his collection of punny phrases make him particularly memorable. Roy has the ability to get through to all of his learners, even those in the most challenging of situations, through love, compassion, and understanding. Outside of the classroom, Roy is a pivotal member of the fourth-grade team. He has excellent resources, ideas, and scaffolds that he's happy to share with all members of the Mulcahy community. He has patience and grace even during the most stressful of times. He is a beacon of calmness for all of us, no matter what the situation is. His door is revolving, and members of the community know that they can depend on Roy to help them problem-solve anything that might come down the pike. Although Roy is an amazing educator, coworker, and overall human being, I am not admiring him for being the greatest mentor of all time. Being in a new district and grade level is exciting, anxiety-provoking, and memorable all at the same time. Before meeting Roy, I wasn't fully aware of the power of a mentor who truly goes above and beyond. Roy has sat with me for hours upon hours, long after everyone in the building was gone. He has explained with great detail the components of curriculum as well as ideas for scaffolding lessons to truly reach all learners in my room. He has coached me through challenging conversations with parents or students. He checks in me every single day, both before and after school, with a "How's it going, kid?" or "Can I get you anything?" Roy truly cares about my growth as an educator, and that alone would have been enough for me. He has helped me gain more confidence and knowledge with my practice and journey as a Taunton educator. He has sat with me after long, long days and deep breathed to make tomorrow into a better and brighter day. His optimism and positivity shines and constantly causes others to feel immediately calmed and capable in his presence. Last one, I promise. Because of Roy, I am better, I am a better and stronger educator. Because of Roy, I feel prepared and hopeful for a long and successful career in Taunton Public Schools. My hope is to one day change as many lives as Roy has. I truly cannot thank you enough for guiding me through this school year, Roy. I hope this small token of my appreciation can help you... I hope this small token of my appreciation can help you feel as awesome as you made me feel all your long.
Still up from the James L. Mulcahy Elementary School, Principal Katie Decuta and Teacher Marisol Correterier.
Tonight, we would like to recognize Ms. Nellie Mejia. Nellie has been a teacher in Taunton for the past 30 years and an educator for 32. Nellie will finish her career in Taunton this year, on June 24th, after many years of supporting and educating not only students but staff in the practices of ESL education. Nellie has been a champion for students that have English as a second language. I first had the pleasure of working with Nellie at the Galligan School many years ago. Nellie, along with several other staff members, worked tirelessly to support all of the ESL
Hello? Okay. First, I'd like to clarify that she's been an educator for 35 years. I have worked with Nellie since 1989. We worked together in other districts, and she never knew this, but she was my mentor. She supported me. She taught me so many things. I followed her steps, and that has been something that I, so amazing that I really want to let her know. During these past 33 years here, I have been fortunate enough to witness her magic. Nellie is an exemplary teacher and leader who advocates for our EL students. She is reliable and enthusiastic. As colleagues, we were always in awe of her great ideas and creativity. Her passion to advocate for marginalized populations is contagious. She always goes out of her way to help students and families in need, and her top priority is, and has always been, empowering our students. Nellie is retiring this year, so I didn't want to let this opportunity pass. I wanted to recognize her as the exemplary teacher, the amazing teacher that she is, and she will be a loss for our district. I can promise you that. Nellie, you will be greatly missed by many who have had the privilege to work with you, especially me, and to be your student. Thank you so much. I know I have so much more to say. It's just, I don't have the words right now, and I know that it has to be brief, so I love you so much, Nellie.
Tonight, I would like to recognize both of my school nurses, Belinda Keith and Liz Pexodo. Liz could not be here tonight, she's with her children at dance, but Belinda was here. I would like to recognize their incredible work over the past two years. Belinda started with me in October of 2020, and Liz started with me in December of 2020. When we opened the Mulcahy School, I knew that filling the school nurse position was going to be a great responsibility for our school, our size. Nurse Manager Karen Regan did an incredible job selecting two outstanding nurses for our school. I've had the pleasure of working alongside both of my nurses, who through a pandemic have supported all of our students and family, as well as many staff members. My nurses play an important role in the health of our school environment. Their day-to-day interactions with students who are suffering ailments from stomach flu to headaches to COVID make an impact on the health of the overall population of our school, as well as the students themselves. When deciding on a school nurse and how to fill the role of the health office, I'm sure there were many qualities that were looked at by Nurse Manager Regan, but some of those qualities that are necessary to handle such a position at such a school are caring nature, empathetic, detail-oriented, adaptable, quick thinkers, great judgment, hard-working, great communicators, professionalism, diligence, being able to never say never, and lifelong learners, and both of them have these qualities and more. Dealing with children on an everyday basis takes a very compassionate person, and Belinda and Liz are just that. Children take their bruised knees much more serious than any adult ever would. Their caring goes into treating such an injury not only requires knowledge and caring, but sensitivity. A minor injury that may not even require medical attention is a big deal to a young child, and our nurses treat every student with respect and discretion. Children won't always open up to adults and speak openly if there are problems in their home lives. They may instead feel and complain about symptoms to nonexistent life illness that are actually a cry for help. Our nurses are there to jump in and support them. Being able to recognize these signs is incredibly important to the lives of our students. Communicating comfortably with children of different ages from preschool to grade four is important, considering they both transitioned from the ER. Not only have they been able to communicate with students from four-years-old to 10-years-old, they have been able to communicate, sometimes in uncomfortable situations, to teachers and parents. My nurses have been rock stars in our school. They have never been or appear to be frazzled, even when dealing with situations that may require 911 and ambulance rides. Both Liz and Belinda have quickly adapted from their ER experiences into the elementary world. They treat every child like their own and support all students with care and respect, even when the same child may visit their office six, seven, or eight times a day. We are extremely lucky to have both Liz and Belinda at our school and to treat and care for our students. Thanks for being superheroes at Mulcahy.
As I give Principal Decuta a breather, I just want to introduce some of our members here from the leadership team. We have Ms. Brenda Monahan, Assistant Superintendent Finance, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Mr. Chris Barata, and the person that keeps the superintendent in line, Ms. Wendy Devine. And one more time for the Mulcahy Elementary School, Principal Decuta.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like Charlene Fiori to come up. Tonight, I would like to recognize Charlene Fiori. Charlene and I have had the pleasure of working together for the past almost four years at Mulcahy School, but her journey in Taunton actually started 30 years ago. Charlene has been a middle school teacher at Kohanit and also a teacher at Friedman Middle School, where she proudly became a Falcon. Charlene has been a music teacher, special education teacher, general education teacher, and inclusion team member. Charlene is currently a third-grade teacher at the Mulcahy School, where she has worked for the past 10 years. Charlene is a passionate and dedicated teacher and individual who cares deeply for her students and families. She works tirelessly to support families and students with materials, books, and support, as well as a listening ear. Throughout the pandemic, I would see Charlene in her car putting together care packages for her many students. She would go home to home, dropping off packets and food and supplemental materials to keep her students engaged. A highlight during the spring of 2020 was when Charlene's lunchtime book club with her third graders online during Google Meet. She had her students join her each day at lunchtime to read along with her in her fascinating tale of Charlotte's Web. Every day, she had an entire class online listening to her story, and if they had to miss a day, she made the chapters available online on a Google Meet for them to listen to later. Charlene would often see many of her students listening to the story while those same students were cooking lunch in the background, jumping up and down on couches, doing chores for their families, but all while listening to Charlene spin a web of Charlotte's Web. They could not or shall not miss a minute of her storytelling. Charlene had such compassion for her students throughout the pandemic, and her families knew it. Charlene is a compassionate person who has many friends and colleagues that support and recognize her many contributions in the Taunton School community and the city of Taunton. Charlene and I first met each other at the old Mulcahy School, when I had to make some very difficult decisions about moving classrooms. And I made a move of a classroom, and I had never met Charlene before, and Charlene came flying into my office, quite passionate about my moves. We problem-solved together, and from that day forward, Charlene and I have had a great professional relationship and developed a great friendship because we both have one thing in common: the students of Mulcahy will succeed. Our school will shine. We wish Charlene well as she heads into retirement in a few short weeks or just 20 school days. Charlene, you will be very missed by the Taunton Public Schools, and thank you for all your dedication and support.
If I can just interrupt, Charlene Fiori, of course, is the spouse of our school committee member Jody Fiori, and I think he'd like to sing her a special song today.
I will lead the singing of a special song. A certain number of years ago today, Charlene was born. It's her birthday. (Singing) Happy to you, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Charlene. Happy birthday to you. I also have to let you in on a little secret. The only people who really know us well know, I never call her Charlene. Her middle name is Daisy, after her grandmother, and I've often referred to her as Daze, D-A-Z-E, because when we met, she was in a daze.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori. And last but not least, we have, representing the Joseph Martin Middle School, Principal Elizabeth Rodriguez.
Well, that was tough to follow, but if I had to be with people, follow them anywhere and be in a city, in a school, it would be with people like these four employees right here. It's going to be hard for me to say a lot because these are the people in my mind that are among the most committed I have ever seen in my lifetime. We see a lot of what happens publicly with students, sometimes with teachers and staff members, but these staff members that are here before you today are the people who take care of things that some people never, ever, ever see. And they are the true heart of Martin and help all of the staff members and all of the students stay together in a unified way. First, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Kristin Tanner. Come on over here, Kristin. So Mrs. Tanner has been at Martin Middle School for about five years or so. She has been a very strong special educator and has now recently transitioned as our instructional coach. This woman, if I had to describe her, I think I would say she's a jack-of-all-trades. I could call her up any time of the day or night, and I say, "Kristin, make this happen," and she does. She has something at home I call a magic machine, where she makes lovely things, she sews things, she creates things. She supports every student, every teacher, every staff member, administrators. She's amazing, and she makes herself available because of the children and staff members and community. Kristin makes herself available 24 hours a day, so thank you, Kristin. Next, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Wendy Helmuth. Not sure how many years Wendy has been in the district, but she has been an educational assistant among the group of people I respect the most in the school district, and she, when I became principal, transitioned to be our guidance secretary. But it's hard to think of her as a guidance secretary when she, like the other three individuals up here, have done pretty much anything and everything. Sometimes when Wendy sees me coming, she runs the other way because she's afraid of what I might ask her, but I can call her, I can text her, I can ask her to do anything, and I'd be, you wouldn't believe some of the things that this woman will do to make sure it's the right thing for students and staff as well. Her judgment is just incredible. She is so committed. It's going to be hard to imagine doing anything in a school without a Wendy around. So Wendy, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything you do. Next, I'd like to recognize our head nurse at Martin, Laurie Fife. This is going to be tough. Laurie's been at Martin for 25 years, and she has seen many people come and go and many students come and go. Martin has a very strong spirit, and she's at the core of it. She has taken care of probably every single child that has come through there, and she puts up with all of the adults, too. And we all know that. She'll do anything and everything to make children feel cared for, feel better, and she doesn't leave us out. She's always available, and just to be a school nurse during a pandemic says enough. But Laurie has committed herself in this job, and Martin will miss you as you move on. Thank you for everything, Laurie. Next, I'd like to recognize our cafeteria supervisor, Brenda Brennan. Brenda's been at Martin for about 17 years. She was there when I got there. When I think of everything that we've gone up and down through the pandemic and all the changes, we've all talked about it and thought about it, and we continue to think about it. All of these four people were there, giving their all every day, and Brenda was showing up at school, feeding the children and the families of Taunton. She doesn't say no to anyone unless it's not going to be good for someone. She's put up with lots of things, and don't you dare tell them about my french fries. Brenda has been, for many people, a hidden member of the Martin community, but those of us that work there know that Brenda will be there any time of the day or night. I would catch her working on weekends secretly in her office. She'll be there any time to answer my call. I'm so grateful to have people like Brenda and all of these women up here. They have held the school community together, and it is the children of Martin Middle School, it is the staff at Martin Middle School, and it's the Taunton community that benefits from this kind of work and dedication. So I thank you all. Thank you, Brenda.
So as we conclude this evening, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here, all the recipients. Congratulations. Thank you to everybody that supports you, and please know that we, as a school committee, as a city, support each and every one of you, so please don't ever forget. And at this time, a motion would be in order to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.[1763.33][1763.33][applause]